And the regularly scheduled meeting of the Greensburg Fire and Commission is called The Order. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. And to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary, anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. At this time, we'd like to ask Chris, you are with us also?
Yes, I will.
And please call roll.
Mark Burser?
Here.
Tom Hunter?
Here.
Roy Lindendorf?
Here.
Bruce Bachover?
Here.
Jamie King?
Here.
Kevin Sweetland?
Here. Thank you. All right. You all were presented minutes from the August 15th meeting. I'm gonna give everybody just a minute or so to look through those, see if there's any changes or record. Do you want to be ready for those minutes?
I didn't see, I looked at minutes over earlier and didn't see anything. I don't know if anybody else did, except a lot of you are better than I in the bed.
Having heard none, I may take and accept the motion to adjourn the minutes as.
Who moved? I'm making the motion.
Jamie.
Roy said.
Okay. Chris, please call roll.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
I'm staying, I was not present in the meeting. Now, I want to apologize to everyone. I forgot to do the pledge allegiance, so I would ask for everybody's forgiveness. Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Minutes. Is there any old business needs to be discussed? Okay. Having heard none, we'll move on to new business. DNN subdivision. Want to lead us in, Kathy?
And before, I feel like this is, I've gone through this months before, a few years ago, and especially with a good old friend Marty Mann, who I've known, I'm not gonna say for how long, but, you know, when I first got out of college, I knew Marty Mann. That's how long I've known Marty Mann. So, nevertheless, before we have a subdivision from Dave O'Meara, it's called DNN Commercial Subdivision. And basically, when we met a few weeks ago, the plat review committee, we were presented, and I apologize for the unclarity of my picture up here, but I do with what I have. But nevertheless, we were proposed, as you see, with five lots, and then there was a through street that went all the way out to the existing Park Street here. This is what was proposed back in 2008, and I don't know if some of you were on the board back then or not. I don't know, Jamie, if you were, and Tom, if you recall. And at that time, they did some flood mitigation work in that area. And then it was talked about the entrance because of being so close to 421 at the same time. But then, you know, we also had this entrance over here to Kathy's Way, which is in and out both directions. However, with NDOT, you never know what they're gonna say. So, this time around, Drew Barth designed it so it would be a right turn in and right turn out, with intentions that DNR was only, DNR, I'm sorry, NDOT would only give the right turn in and right turn out. Then, through much discussion through the plat review, some indicated that there might be too much traffic that would go out and exit out through this area, which, as you can see, there is existing homes here. Now, over here, we have the football field. So, and, you know, people being people, they'll try to get out the easiest route. They felt that this might be, you know, have too much traffic, too much congestion for a residential area. However, you know, they are, they came back with a different plan, and with a new plan, as you can see, they lost two lots. This lot, right here, is a lot, but it will be used as detention for these other three lots. This lot has a potential buyer already, so as you can see, the entrance is the same. It'd be a right turn in, right turn out, only with a cul-de-sac, and the cul-de-sac being located on lot number two. This will be a private drive, as the previous lot, or the previous one, was also going to be a private drive, as you can see, because of the sharp curves that does not meet the city specifications on the radiuses. So, after much discussion through the plat review committee, Mr. Barth came in and felt that, you know, the city was leaning towards not approving that plat. So, they came up with this idea of the three lots, the cul-de-sac, and then off of, again, Park Street here, the city has a right-of-way, a 60-foot right-of-way to the property line right here. I'm sorry that I might can't draw a straight line. However, there is a property back here, and they would also give them access, driveway access to this property back here. So, basically, anyone that would buy this lot would have a driveway access from Park Street back to this lot, and it would be up to that property owner to put in that drive. So, I think I sent you out the new updated plat along with the covenants. The drainage plan, Ron received it kind of late. He's been in communications with Marty Mann, and they've been talking this over, so I can have Ron to go over the drainage plan with you. I think he kind of looked at it vaguely a little bit and can explain a few little things. But, as you can see, we have three lots here. This one, like I said, has a proposed usage for it, and then there would be a second lot here, and then this third lot with the access off of Park Street. The thing about Plan, Plan One, you know, again, they felt that too much traffic, and there was discuss where we could gate it and have, you know, be used for emergency access only, and, you know, there's a lot of discussion, the yays and nays for that. So, that's why they felt to go with this plan. So, that's what we have before us. Ron, do you have anything to add? Or Mark?
Well, I think Kathy has well represented the discussions at a couple of plat reviews, the technical review committees that were held for this site. The one thing that I will comment on, I have actually received two different drainage reports, one for the E3 lot subdivision, and one for the five lot subdivision. There was some confusion that Marty and I have had relative to the requirements of our ordinance, and I think we're on the same page now. Our ordinance requires consideration of what is commonly referred to as a 100-year storm. A 100-year storm is technically a 1% probability of exceedance, a given storm event in a year's time. A 100-year storm is a storm that has a 1% probability that it could be greater than that. Our ordinance requires that the post-development discharge, the peak discharge after all development is completed, is not to exceed the 10-year pre-development peak discharge. Marty did address that. However, I believe, and I do not wish to put words in his mouth, so he can discuss this with you directly, he was not able to achieve the ordinance requirements on the 10-year requirements. And then, also, our ordinance has a provision for a two-year storm to be evaluated. A two-year storm is a storm in a given year that has a 50% probability of being exceeded. And our ordinance requires that after development, the peak discharge not exceed 50% or half of the pre-development two-year storm discharge. At this point, that has not been evaluated. So, assuming I'm representing this correctly, and again, not to put words in Marty's mouth, and I'll let him step up here and explain, you all need to consider if you're willing to grant relief from the requirements of our stormwater ordinance. At the moment, I cannot tell you how much shortfall there is on those two different storming requirements. I don't know if he's able to get 99% or able to get 50% of the requirements of our ordinance. I think that's something we all need to know before you all can determine if you want to grant a net relief. I will quickly touch on Kathy's comments about vehicular access. The driveway on North Michigan Avenue is under the jurisdiction of the NDOT Department of Transportation, and the Indiana Department of Transportation, we have no direct say in that, although you all certainly should have a lot of interest that that be correct. And then, the access out to Park Street, which is Sixth Street, and that is an older platted right-of-way, it's been there, it's been plotted for a long time, but the street to the west of Park Street was never developed, has never been constructed. There is always concern in commingling commercial traffic and residential traffic, or maybe said better, there's always a great interest in not introducing commercial traffic throughout your residential neighborhood, residential areas where you expect to have children playing. And while no one should ever encourage children to play in traffic that are children, so it is appropriate to be cognizant of the potential for increased traffic volumes from such a development, and that appropriate considerations be made to do all we can possibly do to assure the safety of that neighborhood. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have that I'm capable of answering.
When this first was brought before us, back in whatever year she said it was?
2008.
Well, it actually came before you about 18 months ago?
Well, it came before that once, and we talked about limiting access out to the park road. I know there was discussion when we approved it originally to not have any commercial, any vehi, truck traffic going out that way, that that was to not be allowed.
That is a very difficult thing to enforce.
I understood, and we discussed that at the time, and I remember, but there was a lot of concern for, because of the park area and the, now it's just football fields, but I think there was still softball or baseball being played there back when we originally looked at this. Jamie, you remember, we were, were you here? Tom, I know was when we did this. I don't know who, whether Jamie was or not, but I know Tom was when we looked at this. There was a lot of concern about that going out into that neighborhood. There was a lot of people at that meeting when we looked at this, a lot of the neighbors were there. That would be my biggest concern today, is for that one lot, the traffic going out there. Of course, we don't know what's going in there, so we don't know how much tra, I mean, you have the park, depending on what it is, there might be one, two cars a day, you don't know.
My rule of thumb is you look at the most onerous you should think of, and that's what you should consider, or agree or consider this.
The, and we still don't have the flood water figured out, Marty? Is that right?
Well, we've got a couple loose ends, and actually, I could have addressed it, but Drew told me that we're not sure if we're going with a five or a three, so if that works out, and then within a day or two, I can work with Ron. Ron and I had a conversation.
Come up here and identify yourself.
My name is Marty Mann, Land Water Group Engineering out of Columbus. I just want to reiterate what Ron said, we had a conversation before the meeting. There's a little confusion between me and the ordinance, even though I read it and looked at it, I still ran the 10-year instead of the two-year post, so I was a little bit more conservative than I had to be, but I didn't hit the mark in terms of the post-two-year minor issue, easy to resolve, it's just a matter of which way we're going with the original design of the five lot with the through street, or the three lot with the cul-de-sac. The technical issues that Ron and I have are very minor, they can be resolved very quickly. The main issue on the drainage is the need for a variance from the strict standards of the detention, and I just wanted to describe why would we need to ask for that. We're putting in a good-sized detention basin, and we're controlling the runoff to the extent possible. The issue that we have is that the west end of the street, for both options, the five lot and the three lot, because we have to match the grade at US 421, the first little distance of the road coming into the site has to be directly to the creek. There's not enough grade to get it to drain back to the detention pond, so we've got four inlets that have to drain because of the grading directly into the creek, so we can't run those through the detention basin. The detention basin itself is providing good detention. We're proposing very small control holes, a three-inch hole for the 10-year storm and a five-inch for the 100-year, and we could use smaller holes to get a little bit more detention, but you don't want to get too small holes because they get clogged up. So, Ron and I are kind of discussing what the proper orifice size, but no matter how small we make the holes, even if there was no water coming out of the detention basin at all, because of these four inlets draining directly into the creek, overall, for the whole site, we're gonna be a little bit higher than the strict allowance. And Ron correctly said, and I agree, that we need to quantify exactly what that is, but I can tell you it's on the order of one to one and a half cubic feet per second. One thing in the ordinance that really isn't addressed is what you're draining the water into, and from a practical standpoint, we're draining it into a much larger stream. So, my concern is a professional engineer draining water a little bit more than the strict pre and post, in some cases, I would be concerned to the point of maybe trying to put underground detention basin in at the four inlets. But since we're draining into a relatively large creek that has a 100-year flow, close to 1,000 times larger than our site runoff, the small increase over the allowable, I don't believe is gonna cause any kind of problems along the creek. And we will continue to release the water at less than the current rate for the same storm event. So, if we went the 100 to 100 or 2 to 2, we're still reducing the flow to the creek. It's just the over-detection, the 100 to the 10, and the 2 to the half 2, because of those four inlets draining directly into the creek at the west end, that kind of blow up our ability to meet the standard in terms of the whole site. And we looked at trying to buck grade and try to get those inlets to drain to the east, or maybe even put a steeper road in coming from 421 to move the high point in the road farther to the west, so we can get the runoff to go to the detention pond. But we're already at 1.6% coming off of 421, so we don't really feel like we can get those four inlets to drain into the detention basin. So, that would be the reason for the request for a variance, not because we don't want to build a big enough pond, or basin, I should say. Or put in a small enough outlet, it's strictly because site grading dictates that we can't get all of the inlets in, and we minimize the area that we're draining directly into the creek, just the smallest area possible. But that is, you know, that's gonna put us over that limit, and that's why, you know, Ron correctly stated that we would need to apply for a variance. And in the next couple of days, once we know whether we're going five lot or three lot, we'll get that resolved, and I'm sure to Ron's satisfaction, I think we're completely on the same page now.
Any other questions, Mr. Mann?
Just bringing to the board, detention, that is having these inlets going directly into the creek, the property owner itself of that site actually owns the property down like halfway into that creek?
He owns, yeah, he does own down to the creek, and certainly where the asphalt to the creek will be.
So, if any erosion or sinkholes were to occur, he'd be the one responsible to maintain?
Right, any scour, any sinkholes, any erosion. I also wanted to add, we are going to put water quality at each inlet, so, you know, we'll still have the water quality requirement met. I also wanted to add, and sometimes we forget this, in a part and above from the flood, from the drainage, we have floodplain out there, FEMA floodplain, so we have dictated minimum flood protection grades for each lot based on the FEMA flood insurance study profile, based on the upstream limit of where a building would go on the lot at a 90-degree angle to the creek. We go to the FEMA flood insurance profile, take the 100-year flood, run it up 90 degrees to the upstream side of the lot, add two feet for the flood protection grade, and that's a requirement not only for the floor, but in this town, 10 feet out from the building. And a lot of people miss that, because that's not a FEMA requirement, that's a local requirement. So, we're going, we added a note, it's gonna be put on the final plat to make sure each lot developer knows, that they need to elevate those buildings, and if they want to get a letter of map revision, they need to make sure they meet all the requirements in terms of the flood protection grade, not to mention local mandates. So, we are cognizant of the floodway, we did get a permit from DNR for the mitigation pond that exists there now, to account for the fill that was placed in 10 or so years ago. And so, floodplain's taken care of, Ron and I are on the same page on drainage, I apologize for him for missing that once again. You just get so used to doing the 10 to 2 in most communities, and you guys are 2 to 2, which I just keep missing, but I got that, I'm on the right page now. You know, I talked to him about the need for a variance, he explained to me how to present that. I'm confident that, you know, the site will be safe, and there won't be any downstream issues, there won't be any erosion issues, and we, you know, pretty much detained it to the extent practical, based on the site conditions.
But based on everything I've heard, you don't know what, how much of a variance you would be asking for at this time?
No. I mean, it's gonna be in the range of, I mean, percentage-wise, it's tough, because you're looking at so many different storms, it's gonna vary, because we look at the 30-minute, one-hour, two-hour, six-hour, and 24-hour storm, but it's gonna be on the order of, you know, we'll be 80% there, and we're looking at maybe one to one and a half cubic feet per second increase. And I will definitely quantify that in the study. As soon as I know which way we're going, I'll say within 48 hours, I'll have a revised study to Ron and make sure I address exactly that parameter.
Any other questions, Mr. Mann?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kathy, let's try to clear up one point of confusion I've got. Based upon the meetings I went to, it's a three lot subdivision.
Right, and back in 2008, and then from what I hear, 2000, or 18 months ago, it was a five lot subdivision, and it was approved in a preliminary plat, I found my own notes, believe it or not, in 2008, as a five lot subdivision, and back then, there was no issues with the drainage, as we had it reviewed back then. And there was discussion back then of possibly, you know, we could gate that off at Park Street and put a Knox box on it, that way emergency services could have access to it. I know a lot of people are afraid that, you know, people get down there, they don't have no place to turn around and such, and, you know, they felt that, okay, the city's not going towards the five lot, and that's why they came up with the three lot, and that was kind of a surprise to all of us, I think, when they came back with a new plan. So, the reason why I said I presented the five lot is I really don't have a problem with the five lot. I mean, you go to the three lot, they're loosened two lots, and one is just a detention area, and then you have one lot that's gonna, we don't know what the use is, it's just gonna be, number one, and, you know, we're still having traffic in and out, whereas if we gate that and only have an emergency service, we have control, and plus, they have two more lots. That's, that was my theory. We could gate it off, you know, we've had, we have two other areas that are like that, that have a gate across, that has a Knox box on it, that'll way the fire department, EMS, whomever, has access, they can get in and out. But it's entirely up to you to decide if you want the three lot, oops, sorry.
Is it up to this committee, or is it up to the technical review? Because in my opinion, if we're gonna back and start talking about a five lot again, we should go back to technical review, and the police chief, and the fire chief.
Yeah, everyone else. So, we have the three lot, I guess.
That's my thought.
Because the three lot's been approved, and the technical committee review approved the three lot, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what we agreed, I probably said.
Right, Kevin's on that committee.
Well, can I ask you guys this question? Given everything you've heard, would you rather have a three lot with access to, with the potential for Sixth Street to be completed to lot three, or a five lot with it being gated and Sixth Street never being completed?
If we go with the five lot, is the water regulations meant without having the retention pond there, Marty?
We still have a retention basin, and it would be essentially...
Marty, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. The drainage system doesn't change that much. I mean, the location and the size of the detention basin changes, but the concept is the same. We still have four inlets at the west end that drain directly, we still need the variance. From a drainage standpoint, in terms of the amount of runoff and the amount of variance, it really is about the same regardless of which way we go. It's just a little bit more water in the five lot, because you've got five lots, but it's the same area, so it doesn't change very much, it's just mostly the plumbing changes, internal plumbing.
So, from a drainage standpoint, it makes a difference.
One other thing I want to add, and no matter what, this has nothing to do with, it involves both plans, there is another variance that was asked for, and that's the front yard setback, and we keep using our mouths for the corner, in this area, by the bypass. But the front yard, handy, right, the building will face out towards the private drive.
That's my understanding.
Your understanding. So, really, the back of the building is gonna be towards the bypass, which, you know, it's, it's gotta meet building code anyway, no matter what, no matter where this is at the building, it's gonna have to meet building code requirements. So, I feel that the reduced yard setback here is not gonna affect us by any means because of the building code. And to, once they present their site plan and lay out to the state fire and building services, they're gonna also look at, you know, their accessibility route for fire services as well.
Okay. Or, can I have a question, Kathy? Okay. Anybody in the audience that could speak to this matter? Is something...
Fairer than advance. I like the five lots, because I have two ways into this structure. By the way, I don't have those, and that was my biggest concern when I heard about the three lots. And plus, we don't know what's gonna go in that third lot. It could be a business that's gonna bring trucks in and out there. So, at least if we go to the five lots, go straight, gate it, at least my people have a chance to get in if there's an accident in front of that, out there on the highway. Where if there's an accident out on the highway and they need to get in deep, they can't get in there because of the big ditch, that's the reason why I like the five lot.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience that could speak to this item?
One of the things you may want to consider before you figure this out, as I said earlier, the driveway on the North Michigan Avenue was under the jurisdiction of the state.
Say that again.
The driveway on the North Michigan is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation. In the two technical reviews, there was no information about the requirements from NDOT for that driveway, and has been reported that it is to be right in and right out only. However, saying that and constructing the driveway in a fashion that enforces that may be two different things. It has been reported that it is to be right in and right out only. However, saying that and constructing the driveway in a fashion that enforces that may be two different things. If you do a five-lot development with that being the only normal ingress egress, you may want to know a little bit more about what that looks like in the final design. You may want to see what, and the things it should be.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this item? Davey, anything you'd like to add?
On the...
Please say your name.
My name is Dave O'Meara. I had a meeting with the DOT, probably in 'oh eight, I don't know, and we tried everything we could to get a left turn in for that, and they said we would not, they would not do that, because we're too close to I-3. Because we even offered to widen out on 421, you know, we was going to widen maybe three foot on each side to get an actual real good lane in the middle, because you're about two foot short of that, actually being a twelve-foot lane now. And they still wouldn't do it. So, it's going to be right in, right out, I think. I don't think it's going to change. We haven't approached him yet.
Right, Marty?
I don't believe so.
We haven't approached him, because that's what we've been told. I don't think it'll change. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thoughts of board members? I'll throw my thought in there. Let's do this as a thought starter. If our mayor thinks it should be five lot, he has a very valid point about access both ways. Five lot laid out good, three lot lays out. The reason the three lot came to fruition, and I don't want to speak for anybody else if I speak incorrectly, Ron and Kathy chucked in. The reason the three lot came up is because we did have a very, the point of the amount of traffic that potentially would flow into Sixth Street from it was a big concern. We did have a brief discussion about gating it. My thought is that if it's the thought of this board that we think we'd rather have the five lot, I think it should be tabled, sent back to technical review, and a five lot subdivision with completed drainage plan is brought to us, we know what we would be voting for on the variance and so forth.
I'd be in favor of that, but I like the idea of the five lot, but we gate it on the backside. That way, it does fumble it all back down at 421, so.
I would concur with that, and also with what you said, Kevin, that they should come back with the actual figures and everything for the five lot with it gated on the backside. So, we've got access if our emergency responders need it, but yet we control, because we still got the youth football field out there. It's quite busy. If you've ever been out there on a Saturday, it's very busy, so.
Even weeknights, you know, this time of year, they're out there practicing.
Right. It's very busy. Yeah. So, I think that'd be the way to get it tabled.
I'm in favor of that. I think that'd be, that'd be to be of interest, because to know what form of the water, how they're consuming, it's going to be, and to be able to control the traffic, I think that'd be, and to be safe is something that's a thing for us.
So, in addition, Mr. Mann? Okay. I hear the five lot may be more favorable to members here, so how do you make a motion to vote some, you know, we can't see it until the end of the year.
I would suggest we table it, with that coming, going back to technical review and bringing back the final design for the five lot.
So, just a question, and maybe this, from my understanding, they had a five lot plat review already that was approved, is that...
Well...
If they don't have on that, or is it...
Kathy, please, I'll, we had a technical review with the five lot.
We had a tech review with the five lot, and there was...
There was a lot of discussion about traffic.
A lot of discussion regarding the traffic. It wasn't really resolved, per se. However, Drew, and I think Andy, you were there, you guys kind of got the feeling, the feeling that the city didn't want the first street. That's the feeling they got. It was discussed about the gate, and I know Steve Garrett made the comment that he didn't care as long as he had access. He needed access. If it was gated, he didn't care as long as he could get in and out. And I know that...
I think Brendan felt the same.
Brendan kind of felt the same, but he did not want excessive traffic to go on Park Street. He was concerned also, he liked the right turn in, right turn out, simply because 421 and State Road Three is his highest accident area that he has. So, he was, he was pleased with the right turn, right turn out only. Not, I mean, again, not knowing what is going to be put in there, you know, we kind of have an idea of what lot number one is going to be, and I don't know, am I able to say what is, could be? Do you want it off the record, kind of?
It's going to be a fuel extension.
It's going to be a convenient gas station, and so that could be a little, you're going to have the traffic there, but if they go right in, right out, and, you know, we all travel around, everyone has right ins, right outs. We have one out by Walmart with Dairy Queen, and then, you know, you see people going the wrong way all the time, but, you know, it, it seems to work.
You can build a curb structure that kind of encourages that.
Encourages that. You can't prevent people from going over it. I didn't realize people drove over the little retaining wall at Taco Bell just to get out easier, but I guess they do. And I understand that if you drive over it, it's not kind of under warranty either, as Kevin says, if you bought a motor vehicle. So, but, you know, we all have areas all around us that we all go to that have restrictions, and I don't think this little restriction here is going to bother us. It might back up traffic a little bit now and then, but we have it all over town, it seems like nowadays. I mean, you know, just this morning, I fight it every morning in bringing my kids into school, you know, I fight traffic every morning. I fight, am I going to beat the train to the crossing or not? So, no matter where we go, we're always going to have traffic, and, and we're always going to have congestion. But I feel that plat number one makes more sense. I mean, that's what they presented to us before. We didn't have issues with it before. We even talked about gating it way, way back then as well. And, I mean, with the other one, he's losing two lots, and, you know, we're using one lot just for a detention pond that's going to be shared by two owners, you know, to maintain. But I just think this makes more sense.
One other question I have. If it was, if on a five lot plat, would they still need the variance for the setback?
Yes. No matter what, we still need the setback variance for lot number one. Lot number one does not change on either plat.
Okay.
Okay. I got a question, too. If they were to go to the five lots, are they still keeping the retention pond on the west side of the road?
There will, there will be a retention pond.
A retention? It's all back in, I believe it's back in this area, would exist. That's, that's where the curb, resistant...
Was it on the very last, Andy, was it on the very last?
Farthest northeast.
Side next to the residential lots.
They don't have them marked yet.
Right here is the retention.
Okay. Because that'd be four, two, three, four, five. We have one set up over here for retention. It's like right in there.
I guess what I was getting at originally was, you know, eight, we approved, was it the five lot?
Five lots. Almost the exact same plan.
So, if that plan was approved, do they have to reapply after so long, or what's...
Right. Because the plan was not, it was a preliminary plat that was approved. They have one year to make the improvements, and the economy kind of went sour long ago.
That's where I was going.
This is, this would be preliminary and final. He is posting a bond for the utilities only. The street will remain private.
With the exception of whatever happens to Sixth Street?
Yes. With the exception of possibly a little...
Have the block, a city street.
Have a block of street for emergency access.
Okay. On the five lot plat, was from the intersection of Park and Sixth to the subdivision that's unde, that's, that section of street is currently undeveloped?
Right there.
If it was a five lot, was he going to, was he going to plan on paving that, or was he going to state gravel access?
No, I believe it was going to be a somewhat of a paved access, and that would be somewhat.
The initial proposal is bringing up to city standards.
Yes.
Everybody's going to bring up the city, city standard.
Thank you. Well, just based on everything I've heard, if, if we want to table this, Chris, and send it back with the technical review so they can finish their runoff study, make it a five lot if they want with gated access on the sixth, just make the motion table with those comments?
Yes, I agree, sir.
Well, are there any other comments from the board?
Is a month going to make a difference?
Uh, we're good. I'm a little, it's going to get pretty tight, because the buyer of number one lot wants to, you've been, they've been waiting on me to get this done, so I'm not sure. Did you only meet once a month?
Yes. It's every month.
Is there anything else we can do, then?
What's the rules for a special meeting?
You can have it within two weeks. And basically, because of advertising, it has to be advertised ten days prior.
I can call my buyer, my raider tomorrow, and see what we can do, let you guys know. If another month worked for them, then we wouldn't have to have a special meeting.
What's the, you said you need two weeks for proper notification?
I would know tomorrow, I guess. Now, I'd let Kathy know, and see what you guys know. Is that proper advertising? I think that, that would work, right? I would appreciate either way.
How long before we would know the water situation?
Marty, please add a question.
I will have the drainage report refined within two days of tonight to Ron and to Kathy. We're, you know, it's just a matter of tweaking a couple things. I've already got the design done for the five lot, and was addressing the comments on that, and then we switched to the three, so it won't take very long at all. Within forty-eight hours, we'll have something to hand on the, to address his comments, and I think it's satisfactory.
As far as the gate on Park, that's not a problem. We put the gate there, that's not a problem.
So, we're good, then?
Why, I mean, it sounds like we're going to approve this. I mean, why, why can't we approve it with...
Whatever, we don't know what the variance is going to be requested for, but, I don't know. You also advertised the three lot subdivision.
No, it was not advertised as a three lot.
Or it wasn't?
No, it was advertised as a subdivision.
So, if it was advertised as a subdivision, did they would bring back the proper amounts to you, or Ron, whoever, who get that back from Marty? Technical reviews, are they looked at the five lot? Can we go ahead, Chris? Can we, could we approve it based on them providing the proper information for the five lot? Satisfactory to...
That's initially...
But how do you approve variance when you don't know what the numbers are?
I don't know.
If you did it with the condition that he met the city standards, but we already know that they can't meet the city standards, so therefore, we don't have a clue what the variance would be that would be requested.
Just to interject one item, the, the variance to the drainage detention is pretty subjective, pretty much a technical issue. I was wondering if you guys could approve it contingent upon Ron being satisfied with the numbers, with the understanding that if he's not, we can come back for another meeting. Is that possible, if that's something? Because you guys aren't going to be, I mean, with all due respect, you're not engineers probably in terms of what's one CFS versus a half CFS, really more of a technical issue.
We realize why we have a city engineer.
Right. So, you know, my thinking is that Ron and I are on the same page, and we discussed the need for a variance, and we're just talking about numbers. Is it something that you guys could approve conditionally based on his happiness with it, with the understanding that he could pull the plug and require us to come back? That's just an idea.
Would that work?
I'd rather hear Ron.
He would have to talk to Ron.
Well, I know, I would come into him, and I was asking first you and that. I think for you, for you guys, it would be Ron.
Okay, Ron?
I mean, I'd like, I mean, Ron is pretty thorough on that. I mean, he...
Would you, are you, would you be happy with that, or would you rather it come back?
I, if you were to say that you would grant a twenty percent variance, pick a number, I can do the technical review of the analysis, and if, whatever number you pick, if Marty can demonstrate in engineering terms that we got that close to the requirements, the ordinance, that works for me. But it really truly is your duty to decide what relief, if any, should be granted to this project.
If they can say, oh, it's not required, I think, it's not, I'm okay with that, I have a number on me, and whether it comes with a number list. So, you're asking what you guys are about hydrologists or not? I'd be a lot happier if we knew to the shortfall will be. If I'd like to know what...
Okay. We'd bring it back. I mean, that's, that's fine. I was just trying to see if there was a way we could speed this up, but it doesn't appear that there is, so. We'll wait for the phone calls and find out if we have a special meeting in two weeks or we come back in a month, right?
Probably no, like early November end of week, where they were going to call, cannot advertise, and notice a meeting in that short amount of time. It takes ten days of notice, minimum, plus newspaper ads beyond that and a couple of things, so it ends up being two weeks minimum. It's pretty snubbed.
As long as I have it in a certain form to get to her, she, the gal, I can give her news, as long as I have her ready to go and work for her, she can get it done pretty quickly.
If you can get it to her by Wednesday, she can publish by Friday, and then you can meet ten days after that Friday.
It has to go in...
Basically, two weeks, as much as you can get by.
Ten days prior.
So, I'm hearing we want to table this and come back. I think it's in the month of two weeks. Right? Is that what we're hearing?
I think that would be the best. I don't want to look up and say, oh, we're trying to look at the temperature. I don't have a clue what's happening. It's sort of a visual point of going to Cree, because we don't have the numbers. Kevin stated we're not engineers or hydrologists.
October third?
So, I guess I would make a motion that we table this and come back either in two weeks or at our next regular monthly meeting, depending on when they get the, what, all the information gets to Kathy, what his client needs, if they need it in two weeks, or if they're okay with a month. Dave, you'll know tomorrow, right, whether you can have...
Yes, sir.
If you don't need it in two weeks, we can just do it, and we don't have to have a special meeting.
Right. I'll find, I'll find out what you know, guys, on hold.
But right now, October third would be the day, seven o'clock?
It does not.
Does not have to be, but that's two weeks.
I was just saying, two weeks of the day.
Okay. So, are we comfortable with this, if I make a...
You're making a motion to table this, or just make the whole motion and...
I'll make a motion that we table this presentation until we get the final numbers from Mr. Mann, the hydrologist, and we know exactly what we're talking about as far as the overflow goes.
And it would be a five lot that's gated on the...
And it'd be the five lot that's gated. That's the only thing we're going to look at. The five lot gated on the, it's at the east end, right? You got that, Chris? On the Park Street, Andy, if you want to use that instead of the directional.
All right. So, I have a motion, do I have a second? All right. So, I have a second. Do I have any comments from the audience on this motion? All right, so I have a second. Do I have any comments from the audience on this motion? Have you heard that? Chris, please put your vote.
Marty?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes. Okay, so, they, you'll have to get with Kathy as quick as you can, once you know.
I'll let her know first thing in the morning.
Marty, you and Ron, I'll have to do that five lot.
I'll get it started.
Thanks, Kevin.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, miscellaneous items. Does any board members have any miscellaneous items they'd like to speak to?
Just maybe one, one comment real quick in this committee board, Kathy, if you can help with this. Is it, is John a councilor, a chairman, or a mayor, or a department that we had replaced? And I think we talked about this number.
Mayor.
Mayor, okay.
I think.
Oh.
I think he has someone in mind.
Okay.
The other day, he requested for information from me and to give to someone, and he's just waiting on this or that.
Any other thoughts from the board?
I have a question. Where did we ever get Mr. Ritter's probably as far as finalization of cleanup? Is that something that's still in the address?
Yes, it is. Chris and I spoke briefly this afternoon, and I'm passing it on to him. I've sent him two letters to clean, especially to clean up the lot now that everything's been torn down. And I've had complaints again about, you know, there's still wood, a trailer, there's piles of rubble there. And the neighbors are just concerned about children playing and getting hurt. So Chris is going to send him a letter indicating that, you know, he really needs to get it cleaned up. We don't want to have to take litigation against him. So that's where that stands right there. Just on another note, a name in the past is coming again that we have sent a letter to is Earl Masters on South Ireland. I don't know if any of you have their own pass there, just passed the jail in the soccer fields on the east side. It looks horrible. Horrible is not the word, but he has been sent a letter. He did come in and speak with the mayor and I, and we've given him until, thirtieth of this month? To clean up the property for October one, that he would be getting a, notice that we were taking it back. So just a couple. There has been other unsafe building notices that have been sent out on First Street, First and, I should say, First and East for a garage. And then, um, I don't know, I don't know what's out. Another one is for another garage. So far, everyone's kind of complying. I have not heard back from the gentleman at First and North or East.
Did you address one at North Anderson Street? Because I noticed the garage that are taken down there, like ten fourteen or something of that nature.
Yeah, it'd be there, North Anderson, I believe so.
I thought it's down, but the garage, the roof itself was still on the ground, but the garage itself is down.
The one on First and East Street, part of that roof has actually fallen off into the street.
Right.
I walk by there every day.
I had a board, one of the other board members came to me concerned about it because he drives that area every day. And then, a few weeks ago, the owner actually did come in and he knew he had issues. And, you know, he was short on funds, but he was trying to, you know, see what his options were, whether he could build back or try to rehab the existing garage, but I think now it's kind of beyond rehab. But he was asking if he could put, put another accessory building in, exactly what all he could do. So I think he's aware that he's got issues, you know, but now he's got a letter, so. I do have one little question I wanna ask. I never, this is kind of an odd request, and I didn't feel comfortable giving him a yes or no. Crawley Meadows subdivision. It's along, the lots we're talking about are, I just have addresses, so I don't know the lot numbers. But it's where the duplexes are against Vendalee Road. And I had a young gentleman that came in today, very ambitious. And he was willing, I guess there's two of them for sale out in that area. And he is interested in buying those. However, in getting a loan, he needs to go through FHA. And in order to get a loan from FHA, the two lots must be combined into one. So that would make two principal uses on one lot. So it'd kind of be like a apartment complex, so to speak, in Crawley Meadows. However, there's nothing in their evidence that states that they cannot split lots. It states that they can use two lots for one principal use, but nothing about having two principal uses on one lot, which our ordinance prohibits. But it would kind of be like re-subdiving it and putting, making it an apartment complex. I told him I didn't really feel comfortable. I gave him an answer, I wanted some leeway on it. Because to me, it's kind of like he's making a new little subdivision within, but putting the two duplexes on one, like making it a little, like I said, apartment complex. So is that something, this survey should come in this form as an administrative survey? Or is it something, you know, you feel comfortable with letting me sign off on?
Something you might think consider too is when he combines them on one lot and they come somewhat similar to an apartment complex, they're not tied on any services such as trash removal because anything over two units is considered a business. And therefore, he would be responsible to load the trash.
To have four dwellings, would that require a rezoning?
What's he gonna use them for?
He's still gonna leave them as a, as duplexes. And I just heard Ron make a comment that because of being multi-family now, you know, it could require or consume to our four multi-family.
Our three. What's that now, our order two?
It's our two.
Yeah, wouldn't it be three?
The only difference between three and four is you can put a mobile home court on four, you cannot do that on three.
But putting a mobile home court there, they'd have to come to this board.
Okay, but would three be better so we didn't have to send?
Do we want a spot zone?
Well, that would.
If we had one, that's what they need to try to avoid, spot zone.
Right.
Or is it one of those, like, you know, give a waiver, allow this one?
That's where we gotta try to afford.
I know, and see, I just didn't feel comfortable with it, so that's why.
My personal opinion is they should state the intent and let's give them bills. And they should main separate, I mean, individual lots.
I just don't, I really didn't feel comfortable with giving.
So you have a duplex on two lots, and he wants to buy both lots.
Right, so we have a duplex on one.
So what's the rule if you have a duplex on one lot?
You can have a duplex on one lot.
So if I bought one and Jamie bought one, we wouldn't be having this question? But it's, he's buying two. I still.
But he wants to combine the lots to make one lot.
He wants to buy the lots, buy, let's say lots, and I don't, I have no clue if this is the right lots. Seven and eight, let's say it's lots seven and eight.
So lot seven has a duplex on it, five has a duplex.
Correct, and he's buying both.
Why would you, why would you do that?
Because to get a loan through FHA, they're saying we need them to be combined.
Oh, well, here's what I tried running into, he's, it's not a primary residence family, right?
He says it's going to be.
The one lot, the second lot wouldn't be considered, we can't have primary residence, four and one. So what if that could be considered, that's a problem.
They could finance without them on both.
I would think that is, that's possible, that's what I think.
Okay, he's not gonna change the use, he's still gonna, there're gonna be duplexes.
Pardon, yes, duplexes.
Whatever, okay. This is kind of like what we did before. Couldn't this be a fall under the administration thing that we did before, Ron?
You could combine the lots under an administrative subdivision.
But we were combining lots so you could build non-structure on two lots.
But when you combine the two lots, you end up with four dwelling units.
On one lot.
On one lot, and that's not permitted in our two.
Right, because that makes it multi-family, right? Is that the deal?
So I think the answer here is it's, it wouldn't be permitted by the zoning ordinance, and so, I think that's where we go.
He'd either have to come before this board to rezone.
Have to petition for rezone, which is an ordinance that ends up at council.
Or he can lie to re-subdivide with a waiver.
But re-subdiving doesn't change the zoning.
No, with a waiver to, to allow it.
You seem to be very.
I know, I'm stretching it, but.
I think it'd have to be rezone, and I, I think that's where we go with this, is that it'd have to be rezoned. And that solves the problem.
That solves my problem right there, we can't do it, like, does he? I can tell him that he has a ninety, ten chance of getting it rezoned probably because it's spot zoning, and you typically don't do spot zoning.
Not actually a chance of it.
That exactly.
Yeah, I'd say, you're on the right field for that, and then, but it would, I agree with Kevin, rezoning's on my way together, if that's what he's wanting to do.
Okay. Take this all in.
Anything else? Having heard nothing, I take a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
So we have a second?
Second.